And welcome to the Finance Subcommittee meeting of the Brockton School Committee, Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:30-ish PM. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the Open Meeting Law's requirements that meetings be held in public places open and physically accessible to the public so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate alternative means. This meeting will be held and will be accessible to the public via Brockton Community Access, Brockton Public Schools website, www.bpsma.org, YouTube and Comcast Channel 98 and Comcast Channel 1071 HD version. The public can access this meeting via the following link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. This evening's finance agenda has two items on the agenda, the FY 2022 School Department Budget and any other business for finance. With that, I will call the roll. All right. Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
All right. Vice Chair D'Agostino is here. Ms. Asak.
Here.
Mrs. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Minicello.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
We are quorum. Superintendent Thomas, the floor is yours. Or Aldo.
Hold on. So Aldo's going to go over the latest cherry sheet for our Chapter 70 funding, and I know it was updated just last week from the House and the Senate. So this is provided to us by the Department of Education.
Right, exactly. As you know, every year when the budget comes out, first the governor proposes his budget, then a month or two later.
Turn that on, Aldo. I don't think the mic's on. It's a green button, the green light on?
Now it's on. Good evening. So I'll be reviewing our, what we call the cherry sheet from the Division of Local Services. Every year when the budget comes out, the governor proposes the budget and gives us his budget in January. Come mid-April, the House, who's had time to debate on it, comes out with their budget. Next month, the Senate will come out with their version of the budget, and then following that, there'll be a compromise committee in some point, and later May, there'll be a compromise budget for the year. So the governor's budget historically has always been a little lower than when it comes out as. So the governor originally proposed 210 million, 210.5 million, which was about a $20 million increase, $21 million increase for the school department on Chapter 70. The House, just about a week or so ago, came out with their budget, which is up about $1,004,000. So the House is at 212.3 million. That's great news for us. The Senate usually either matches or sometimes comes in even a little higher than that, depending on how the budget year goes. So all that is adding to our overall base. It helps with the hirings that we want. Within the Department of Local Services, they also have, they've got Chapter 70, they also have the charter school tuition. So we have what we call ascending tuition and receiving tuition. So the money we pay out to charter schools, and then an amount that we get reimbursed from the state on that. Historically, we've never gotten our full reimbursement. So as students are in a charter school more than four, five years, we no longer get reimbursed for them. So we're losing about $467,000 this year in charter school reimbursements, which is not good. And at the same time, the amount of students that have gone to charter schools have increased our costs by 2.6 million more this year going to charter schools. They've level funded us on school choice. I don't know why. I think they're waiting for more accurate figures to come through. So the same cost and the same in and the same out on school choice tuition. So overall, netting out the additional costs for charter school from our increase, we're looking at $20 million increase from last year to this year, which is really huge. That's great for this district. And like I said, as we go forward, hopefully the Senate adds a little more to it. And in the end, hopefully this is the beginning of our upswing, where each year we start to see at least inflation or an increase on this budget. So with that, I know the superintendent has what he's proposing to do with some of these funds.
Any questions on, for Aldo on that?
Just one. When does the Senate come out with their?
They're usually middle of May.
Middle of May?
Yes, middle of April for House and middle of May for Senate.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing, I was just curious, and I know typically the Senate is either the same or more. Do you recall at any point in recent times it ever being less?
Yes. And the reason I say yes is because sometimes they move money, more money to the charters and less money in Chapter 70, so they kind of move the figures around a little bit. So in some districts, that helps them. In districts like Brockton, we have a lot of children that go to charter schools, it hurts us. So that's where we sometimes see a change. It all depends on how they, they set the reimbursement rates. The way charters work is everybody gets 100% the first year, the charter school the second year gets 100%, we get 60%, and so on. So depending on how they work those, those figures. So it's usually pretty, I mean, we usually end up pretty close with the House.
And even then, still, it's got to go to conference committee anyway unless they just accept the House budget as is.
Yeah, they never accept it as is.
Right, I'm just saying. So it's going to go to conference committee anyway. All right. And the, I know we had talked a little bit, when the House came out with their number, it was, what, 1.8 more? What was the?
1.8, because you're always looking just at Chapter 70, but then you have to net out what happens on the charter school number. So you can see the charter school went from $21,400,000 to $21,500,000. So it was about $130,000 less that we're getting from that alone. So and at the same time, the charter reimbursement went down by 230,000. So there's about your $400,000. So they gave more to charter schools and gave us less in reimbursement.
Right. So that 1.8, we didn't get, we're not getting 1.8 because of the charter, flushing out some of that.
Exactly.
Right, okay. I just wanted to bring that up, because I know there's always some, you know, it gets announced of what the number is, but there's always.
There's always the factor. Right, it gets announced as Chapter 70, but you have to net out what the charter schools and the sending choice tuition on school choice, that's how it adds, so.
Exactly. Okay. Anyone else? Okay?
All right. So this pretty much is before we head into finalizing the budget and going over the final budget next week and having a public hearing moving forward and obviously moving to the, sending the mayor the final budget. So pretty much this is the last of the presentation. As you know, we've taken this in some different parts, and tonight will be the final part of that process. So first, I'll start with proposed after-school programs, and these are going to really focus on helping our students recover from the effects of COVID in the slide, the academic slide. But it's also, I recommend that we put in some enrichment athletic programs that will also help, as we know, for well-rounded students and meet their needs, not only academically, but for their social, emotional wellbeing. So we're looking at $500,000 for academic after-school programs at all levels, enrichment programs at all levels, another $500,000. Again, these are after-school programs. Some of them will be before-school programs. Music programs, expanding opportunities for students to take part in music after school and possibly before school, that's $150,000. Summer programs this year for not only academic but social, emotional wellbeing, $250,000. And again, if you look to the right, these are all the SIR II funds, which is, was the second stimulus package. However, there is a possibility that some of these summer programs will be grant-funded. We're waiting on grants from the Department of Education that are geared towards summer programs, so some of this could be coming out and going towards a grant. But right now, we're taking out a SIR II. Next year, we're looking to add, for the first time in, I think, probably 40 years, back to middle school football, which would, I think, is very important, you know, very popular, obviously, it's the only, one of the only few sports we do not have at the middle, middle school level. To get that up and running, it's $42,000 to start the new program, and that's for, basically for coaches. We need buses at about $5,500,000. And then to get them started with the equipment needed, especially for safety, it's $36,000. Making sure we reinstate all intermural programs that were previously cut and brought back at a lower scale, those would be fully reinstated. You already did that, some of that last year and the year before, so that leaves us about $50,000 left to get us back to the levels we were at before all the cuts. We want to bring back the Homework Helper program that used to be in place, again, before the budget cuts years ago. That's at all levels, where students able to get homework help, and some of that will be virtually. That's $100,000. After-school mentoring, to have our students work with our mentors after school, $150,000. The Rising First Grade Program, which is targeted for our students in kindergarten that did not come with us this year, but also kindergarten students that obviously missed out on a lot this year. There's a summer program for them, which is $130,000. And then preparing for vacation and Saturday school next year, which is also a big push from the Department of Ed, is $150,000. So those are all the after-school programs, and some of them are before-school programs. Some of them will be Saturday, some of them will be vacation schools. Some of those programs listed will be credit recovery. Just everything we feel that we need to help our students. I think it was important to take a big chunk of the SIR II money and put it, put it towards these programs. So I don't know if there's any questions on those before we move to the next section.
Mr. Minicello?
I can't agree more that those are very well-planned and well-welcome additions to our budget, especially, you know, the Homework Helper, all, anything academic, you know, to get our kids up to speed and up to snuff is great. Let me ask you a quick question about any support for our students, you know, leaving high school for our seniors and applying to, you know, higher education or, or career or, you know, or, you know, trade schools or what have you. Any type of support or any ideas for funding to try to assist with a lot of kids in our district that certainly have, could use a little help and may not have, you know, people that have gone to college, that might be first-time, you know, entries into college or beyond.
Yes, so right now, we're working with Dr. Murray, Kathy Ledger, the head of guidance. We're using this year's money to help our students in that situation. Also, we're going to use some money to help our seniors that are leaving us for summer jobs. We're working with the mayor's office, who's actually offering a summer jobs program. And also, we want to offer a lot of our seniors who are leaving summer jobs to work in these programs, because we're going to need their help. We're going to need students to work with our younger students that need summer jobs. But like Mr. Minicello said, we're also working with our guidance department at Brockton High to make sure we're providing them with the help they need to, you know, for college applications, and then also the area of college career.
Yeah. So if you need support from us, please, you know, present it so that we can all have a discussion.
Absolutely. I'll have, I'll have Dr. Murray and Kathy join us at upcoming meeting, just to fill us in on everything they're doing.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez?
I just wanted to emphasize, just for football. Playing football in the city for many years, and then also running an adult program. This is a much-needed sport to be a feeder system, you know, to our high school. And then it also takes a huge burden off of families that are actually paying, that have numerous, you know, children that play, you know, extracurricular sports, specifically football, and, you know, paying all these fees to play it. Also, I just want to touch base on this, and, you know, this, you know, approving this, we also need to put a plan into place to make sure that we do have the facilities to sustain this football program. As of right now, you know, the high school is, you know, overburdened with, you know, applicants that are trying to use it and being denied usage of it, you know, because we don't have the facilities in the city throughout parks and school to sustain this. I would like to see, you know, all four junior high, middle schools, northeast, western, south, with the fields that are attached there. The mayor's office can move forward a request through the POCS department to make sure we take full control so that, you know, we can actually put a plan into place to design this and, you know, get it turfed, get it, you know, light it up and make it a beautiful stadium for these kids to play. As we know, we're losing a lot of students in the city of Brockton to other communities, specifically because of sports. Not a huge number, but there's a, there's a, there's a number there, and I know there's going to be, this program's going to take off effectively for the people that are involved in it. So I'm very happy that this is actually in the budget. And then also, you know, with the Keith Park, I believe that would probably be a site where they're looking at playing the games, and hopefully Jamie can get out there and assess the irrigation system and, you know, reseed it and fertilize it and so forth. And also, Mike, if they could look at that container that's still out there, I'm not sure what it's being used for, and try to make it a nice facility for these students to play football. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, I'll, yeah, and I'll just jump in with a comment, you know, I'm glad to see that we're able to bring, especially the middle school and intermural programs. You know, I feel like during the years that we were cutting, middle school was particularly hit hardest with the loss of programming. And again, obviously, it was about, you know, trying to preserve programs here and saving positions and, you know, everything else that went into that. But so I'm glad to see that we're able to, you know, finally reinvest and get the football program going. Tony and I've talked about that quite a bit and agree how much sense that makes and what a great opportunity it is, you know, as well as, obviously, the academic support that's in here that we've, we've talked about, you know, based on the testing results that we know, we know we need for the next couple of years to, you know, help kids get back to where they need to be. So, you know, I appreciate that you've, you've covered all those, all those areas and, you know, so it definitely was well thought out, and, yeah, it looks good. Any additional support you need from this body, make sure that, yeah, let us know.
No, absolutely. And again, we're still waiting on SIR III.
Right.
So we'll see. I mean, so there's, obviously, just because we go through and finalize a budget, if there's things that we need, obviously, we'd come back to you. But again, I know that SIR II was about $15 million, and I know we're trying to make sure that we do have that loss of enrollment by almost 1,000 students. I know they're trying to keep a good amount of that money aside to, because we don't know, the department this year did not fund, so some, some of the urbans took a big hit and did not really make gains with their SOA money, because they lost so much in enrollment. Luckily, again, our enrollment was not down that much on October 1st, but now it is. And if we don't get those kids back by next, this October 1st, then we got to kind of have that cushion available. So we're not cutting things, but I'm comfortable with these numbers that we would still have that money aside to, you know, cushion that loss of the enrollment. I'm hoping that the state does something next year, because I know there's a lot of districts that are making a lot of noise that, that they didn't fund a pothole fund for loss of enrollment. So we just have to always keep that in the back of our mind until, because hopefully we can get a lot of those kids back before October 1st. But again, it's about 1,000 students. It's a lot. It's a lot of my, that was $15 million?
$15 million, exactly.
Yeah. Right. You know, and it's a good point, because the SIR money, this is federal stimulus money, and so when does that, like, a lot of that money has an expiration date. You have to use it by this point, or you got to give it back, right? What's our timeline on this?
So I think it's 2023 for SIR II. September 23, of September of 2023. And I'm hearing, and it hasn't come out yet, that SIR III would probably go into 2024.
Okay. So that's.
That's good news.
No, and that, yeah, right, because normally, we're not in a position where we can hold on to funds for future years. It's a use-it-or-lose-it type of situation, and that was the concern I was getting to is, geez, we're reinstating all these programs, implementing all these wonderful programs with SIR money, and what about next year? But that's why I wanted to ask, you know, are we able to, to hold on to some of these funds so that, you know, we can use that to make, maintain these programs for the next couple of years? And hopefully, over time, as Chapter 70 and SOA money continues to flow, as the SIR money is expiring and being used, we'll be able to backfill it with, you know, state funds and local funds and, you know. But just, again, you know, trying to think a little bit long-term on, on, on some of this, so. Okay. Mr. Sullivan, I think you had your hand up, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank, thank the superintendent, Ian Aldo, both. Number one, it's been a long time since we had a meeting like this, where we're actually adding things to the budget. It's, it's been a real long time. In fact, I don't remember when it was done. But this is, this is what Brockton needs, to get back into shape, to get the kids back, get all the sports back. This is beautiful. This is probably the best thing that's happened to the city. And I just wanted to thank you both, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know you came back. Thank you, or a job well done.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan. So next is staffing recommendations. I would recommend, after two years, that we fill the empty deputy superintendent's position, that obviously, we left vacant, and it was a good idea to leave that vacant, because we didn't, it did save layoffs. So I would recommend that we bring that position back. Then we have the strategic planning process, which is going to be our new strategic plan that we're working on with Desi and the Office of Planning for Success. That's about $75,000. That's actually making sure that we, you know, make sure people can do some extra hours to work on the strategic plan. It's also marketing to get, make sure our community, our parents, our stakeholders, our students as well, they need to be involved with the strategic plan. It's not just done from the inside, it's got to be done from the inside and outside. And that's why we use, that we're using the Planning for Success model, and we'll have that person here to present to you within the next few meetings. Then part of that strategic planning is the restructure of central administration. Some of these positions would be union. This is, I'm asking for $500,000. It's probably about four positions. Some of those would be union, and some would not be. But again, it's right from our district review that we are not, we do not have the structure in place, especially in the area of teaching and learning, to be successful. So those positions would focus on teaching and learning. And again, I want, I don't want to name those positions now, because I think it's got to be part of the strategic planning process. And it's also part of the negotiation process, because some of these positions would be union positions. And then I recommend our Grow Your Own program, which HR has done a great job with, and that's working with our PARRAs and our MTAs and some of our mentors and others. There's been other employees that work for us that have become, we've had some of our custodians become teachers. So our Grow Your Own program is working with, you know, the employees that work here. Most of them from Brockton, people of color, and that would really help. So it's $100,000 to continue and really, you know, pump up that program even bigger. And part of that is vouchers for them to take the MTLs classes to help them get through the MTL. Some of this could be college classes that a few of them need to take to finalize and get their certification. So it's all help about getting employees that work for us, help build diversity with our teaching and administrative staff, and I'm asking to put $100,000, and that would go to HR, to really boost the efforts that they're already doing. And then Brockton High School in the winter season, we have over 100 students who are participating in that, and we have two coaches. We need to go to three. It's a, it's a safety issue. It's the winter track season. Sometimes we have 130 students take part in that. This year alone, in COVID, we had 100. So we're asking to add a coach to the, to the high school track coach for the winter season, and that's $6,000. So that is the staffing piece. So I'll take any questions on that.
Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Sullivan?
I just had a comment about the Grow Your Own. We've had that program like four or five years, right?
Yes. We had, we spent through a grant with the Department of Education. Right now, we haven't got word on where they're going to be funding that, so I just wanted to make sure that that program continues. It's been very successful. Again, we've managed to get several of our PARRAs, MTAs, and some of our mentors now certified to become adjustment counselors, teachers. Some have become interventionists, so it's helped them get certified, and it just, it's been a great program, and I think it's, we need to continue that.
Right.
And any extra funding that comes from the state, obviously, would, would go towards that, because we do get grants through the Inspire program. We do still have our four Inspire fellows that, that work on helping to build diversity, so this is all part of that program.
So a lot of Brockton residents have gone through that program and became teachers.
Absolutely.
A custodian became a teacher and?
Yeah, there's been a few custodians, there's been a lot of PARRAs and MTAs, there've been some mentors. So we've been able to, I think there one time was a school police officer, so, yeah, it's really been a great program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. And Mrs. Sullivan, actually, that was one of the, the one item I wanted to comment on too, and I see a few other people. Typically, and I apologize, putting you on the spot a little bit, what's the amount of money usually allotted for this?
For the, from the Department of Ed?
Right. What do we usually have in?
It's usually about $50,000 from the Department of Ed, so even that on top of this is.
So again, I guess that's where I'm going. So normally, we only have $50,000 for this particular item. And do we, do we burn through that and get to a point where we're saying no to people?
Usually not. I mean, there's been a couple times we've run out of vouchers, and I've asked Aldo to put some money in for vouchers where, because they give you so many vouchers for the Department of Ed for the test, and there's been a few times that we've run out and we've been able to put money towards that. But this way, with this money, we will not be running out, and we can actually expand some of the.
Right. And that's kind of the point I was getting to, is like, $100,000 is good, but is it enough to make sure that everyone that we have in the district that wants to take advantage of it is going to have, we're going to have the money to offer it to anybody who wants it, or are we going to run out? Sounds like, hopefully, we continue to get the same level of grant funding, and maybe it ends up at 150. So I guess what I'm getting to is, let's assume for now, just because we don't know, that this 100 is it. This should be based on past interest, more than adequate to cover the need or the interest?
Yeah, because the voucher, I think it's, I don't know, the average cost for the test that's been years since I take, is it $150? $180? So it's about $180, so, you know. But I wanted some money put aside if there is, you know, if there's a, somebody that's been with us a while and they need, and they're struggling and they need a college class to finalize. I wanted to have that option as well, because sometimes that's an important thing. That's, sometimes that keeps a PARA or an MTA or another employee from getting that, over that last hurdle, or maybe one more class that they have to take. And, and that's just not about a voucher for the test. It's also a voucher for them to take the prep course, which is more expensive, about $500 to take a prep course to then pass the MTL. And again, you have to pass the communications part, and then you have to pass the subject part, whatever subject you're looking to, to teach. So, you know, if, if we don't get the extra money from the Department of Ed, then I think we could come back and look to put more money there.
Okay. Right. I mean, it sounds like a great program, and I'm glad we've been able to grant fund it, but I want to make sure, you know, that, that we've got enough in there. So certainly, if we don't get that grant, you know, please, and I'm sure you would, you know, let us know.
And if you look at, when we get to the next section, there's some money there too that would support that program.
Okay. All right. But you'll let us know if we don't get the grant, so we can put more money into this item.
Absolutely.
Great. All right. Any, let's see, I saw Mr. Minicello.
So through the strategic planning process, there's positions in the Office of Teaching and Learning that were lost over the years, and that are important to not, basically, we don't want to bring back some of the positions that didn't make sense. So some of this is about the strategic planning to bring back positions that actually work now, that may, were cut maybe eight years ago, to meet the needs of the ever-changing, the sustainability plans. We have 11 schools in turnaround, so, you know. So, you know, we have to restructure some of the old positions that, before we bring them back, so they make sense, and they're up to speed with the current curriculum, they're up to speed with sustainability, with our new evaluation process. So I don't want to bring back positions because we just had them before. As you know, Mr. Minicello, there were some positions that we had that were administrative positions that just didn't make sense years ago. So part of this restructuring is the planning process through strategic planning that will help us, you know, select positions that are going to make sense, that work nowadays that did not work 10 years ago.
That we'll cover in curriculum or finance?
That would probably come through curriculum and then go to finance.
Okay. So we'll have, so basically, the next discussion of that item, line item, will basically be, you think, in curriculum?
Curriculum. And we'll talk through the strategic plan and process and then focus on some of that, you know, some of these things have to be, again, it's all tied to teaching and learning. It's tied to professional development. It's tied to a lot of different things that I think, again, positions that we had in the past just don't make sense bringing back without them being restructured.
And then we'll want to do that prior to, obviously, submitting the budget.
Yep.
Okay. I know you don't want to publicly state the positions at this point, but as soon as you've kind of got that figured out, again, it is a half a million dollars and, how do I put this nicely? Whatever. Central administration, staffing and spending was a hot button in the past. So I certainly think that, you know, we would want to know more about these as as you are able to figure those details out.
Some of them have to be negotiated.
Right.
Absolutely. And some of them just, again, this is, this structure is not set up for a district our size to work.
Right. Right. So definitely want to hear more detail on that as you have it. Ms. Azak, I think you are next.
Actually, Mr. Minicello did that. Both of you had?
Kind of covered that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else before the Superintendent moves on? All right.
Yeah, just to follow up. I mean, remember, we have Dr. Murray, who's the Principal of Brockton High, but also an Executive Director at Middle Schools, which has pointed out to not, even though Dr. Murray's done a great job, it does not make sense. You have associate principals at the middle schools who are supposed to be focused on the middle schools they work at, are also content leads across the district. So for example, a middle school associate who works at a middle school is also the content lead for all middle school, for science across all middle schools. That is not a system that works. And again, $500,000 is basically four positions, and for a district, that is not a lot. And but I'm, I just, again, I'm not bringing back positions that don't make sense. So you'll definitely have the positions where they'll do the titles before the budget becomes final.
Okay. And the the detail you just provided also makes sense, too. So but we'll look forward to the the additional details as you finalize them. Thank you. Mr. Minicello?
Just as a further comment with respect to what the Superintendent just said, in the past, as Mr. Sullivan pointed out about years that we've been cutting and cutting and cutting, well, we were cutting so that we would have enough people out in the field to deal with our students. But make no mistake about it, the district review showed a bunch of warts and flaws. And in order to get Brockton academically where it needs to be, you need an infusion of well-thought-out, effective oversight positions to make sure people in the field are doing exactly what they need to do, are presenting materials in the best way, up-to-date curriculum as as possible, providing teachers with the supports they need in order to effectively teach and in order to effectively deliver to our vast cultural student body who have all sorts of different specifics based on, you know, all the places that they come to. It's not a one-size-fits-all for for this district, you know. It's a lot of people, a lot of students coming from different places and different methods and supports need to be in place to make it effective for all of our students. So there needs to be, you know, a real hard look at what this district needs in terms of effective positions to deliver in order to get the academics. And Brockton being the number one academic urban in the state, like we know we always were, and we know we need to get back to. So make no mistake about it, there needs to be oversight positions, well-thought-of oversight positions, put in place in order to deliver to our vast student body who has, comes from many, many unique and beautiful places. And we need to figure out how to deliver, to improve it, to bring the tide up for all of the the students. So that's it.
And I agree. I mean, in in the years we had to cut, those positions had to go. I mean, it was protecting what was in the classroom, and I was all for it. I mean, I, again, I just left the Deputy Superintendent's job empty for two years because we need people in the classrooms. And, you know, and I had no problem doing that, and we, and that's the way we've done it over, you know, I've been at Central now since 2010, and that's when pretty much the cut, the cutting started and, you know, and those positions had to go to protect classroom. But now that there's money, there are big, like Mr. Minicello said, warts that keep us from, you know, really moving forward in the area of teaching and learning. And again, I, you know, this is about four positions. Again, the Deputy Superintendent's five, but you, it just can't be bringing positions back that existed eight years, 10 years ago, because, again, it needs to be modernized. It's a whole different story now. 11 schools in turnaround, a different evaluation process. A lot more teachers need to do and learn as far as with technology. So, you know, these have to be positions that, again, there's oversight, but also have to support the teachers in the classrooms.
Right. No, and I think, you know, everything we're saying makes sense, right? We're rebuilding, but we don't have to rebuild, nor should we, because we're not the same district we were 10 years ago. We don't want to rebuild exactly as it was because that wouldn't fit now. That wouldn't make sense now. We're not, we're not what we were 10 years ago. We need to rebuild in a way that makes sense for the district that we are now and the people that are here now and the students that are here now, et cetera, all the things we've talked about. So, all right. Anything else?
All right. So next is the Equity and Diversity Department. So again, this is the new department, the Office of Equity Diversity, Executive Director. So that's $160,000. That will be hired by next week, the end of next week. $80,000 of that is local because the rest is grant-funded. There is a chance that they're going to be, continue to be grant-funded for next year, I mean, the year after. So we'll let you know about that. We need an administrative assistant for that person. And then this, again, is a general budget and program and needs, and this will be targeted for professional development, targeted for programs, curriculum, and allow this new Equity and Diversity Inclusion Executive Director to build an office and have materials. Because, again, we're building this office pretty much from the ground up, even though, again, Sharon, her Diversity and Equity Task Force, along with June, have been doing a lot with curriculum and and programs, and this will provide even more of that. And some of that money will also go towards helping bring diversity to our teaching staff. So not all of that is all in HR. It will also be housed in the Office of Equity and Diversity and Inclusion. And then we have the high school program offerings to all high schools is $120,000. So in our district review, we were hit because there's programs that are not offered to our students at The Champion and also the Frederick Douglass Academy, and also The Huntington School and Edison Academy. So to make sure that those students have the equity that, and have the, pretty much the same programs that are offered to our Brockton High School students, we recommend $120,000 to make sure that those those schools have the different pathways, have the same opportunities, students that go to that, have those schools have the same opportunities that the students at Brockton High have.
All right. I have a question, and I'm sure there may be others. On the high school program offerings piece, what, can you give me some examples of?
So it's basically having those students make sure they participate in all the the programs that the Chapter 74 has to offer, which is culinary arts, automotive, printing, graphic arts, making sure they have opportunities for all the arts. You know, the the after-school clubs that that all the high school has to make sure we have them at those schools as well. There's also programs there to, there's some enrichment programs there. And some of this is going to be developed by the students themselves. It's things that the the staff at those schools can actually develop. There might be things that don't exist now that they might, may want to create.
Right. And I think, you know, you just said something. It's really a wonderful opportunity for the students at those schools to say, here's an interest we have and would like to develop a program around that. That's a really nice opportunity for them. So, great. I appreciate it. I just wanted to get a flavor of what types of programs. Anyone else on this section?
Oh, there's one more is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I missed it. So restorative justice programs and training for our staff as we try to move away from suspension and more towards restorative justice practices. We need to put money in the budget, $80,000, to start the training for our administrators and our all teachers and support staff so we can move towards restorative justice practices and, again, move more away from out-of-school suspension.
Okay. And again, I hate to put you on the spot, but just for someone at home that says, okay, so you're not going to suspend, what do you, what kind of things would you do instead for restorative justice?
Restorative justice is practices that they really deal with behavior issues that continue to come up, disruption usually. Obviously, there, unfortunately, there still has to be some suspension for major, major infractions.
Of course.
But there are, like, the student that continues to get suspended for the behavior issues, and it's the same thing over and over again. It's usually the same, they're having an issue with the same people, the same teachers, the same staff. It's basically putting things in place to help restore the relationships, and it's so it doesn't become something that just continues. That's been an issue with our students, especially students in the transition years, where, you know, it's just a cycle that student gets into, and they continue to get the merits, continue to get suspension, and out-of-school suspension does not fix it.
Right.
So we have to change our practices. And again, there are situations that, where the issues are safety, where out-of-school suspension unfortunately still has to be used because it's for the safety of all. But as far as like these infractions that continue to have students miss in-school time, we try to want to get away from that and really make it more, again, what's the root of the problem? Have the student, the teacher, Adjustment Counselors, the Assistant Principal, the Principal, work to see how we can get this fixed rather than suspend.
Right. And that's kind of what I was, what I was looking for. And so, right, because just kicking them out for a few days obviously doesn't address why the behavior happened, the root causes, you put up of the behavior. So we're talking about more counseling and support services is what this would?
Yeah, but it also is, gives more support to the teachers because, again, a teacher's in a classroom, they have 26, 28 kids, and this constant disruption, that's an issue, too. I mean, because there's other, there's, you know, if it's one student, there's 27 other students in there that need to get an education. So that's why these practices help, you know, kind of eliminate those behaviors, because there's always, there's a root of those behaviors. There's a reason why. I don't think any student comes to school and wants to, you know, disrupt. It's, there's always an underlying issue that's going on. So it helps find out what that is, support the student, but also support the teacher with strategies, how this can get fixed rather than it becoming a constant cycle of getting sent out of class, getting suspended. It just, usually, it doesn't work. It doesn't solve the problem.
Right. Right. You never address why they're acting the way they are. All right. All right. Any other? Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to ask, the grant was for, how much was the grant for, for the Equity Diversity?
Yes. The Nellie May Grant.
Yeah. How much was it for? I forget.
It was $250,000.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And that comes up again, so we'll be reapplying for that. That would start again in in July.
And you think?
I mean, September, I'm sorry.
You think you're going to get that again?
Yeah. Hopefully, yeah. I have a meeting with them soon, I think this week or next week. So they've been positive about the work that Sharon has been doing, the work that Cynthia has been doing, Manuel and Amina have been doing. So they've been positive about that work. So I think that, and that showing a commitment to Equity and Diversity Inclusion will also help us, I believe, to to get that grant again. And that grant, you know, only can get bigger as we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? All right. Go ahead and?
And then curriculum and professional development. So we've been going through the curate process with the Department of Education. So there is new curriculum coming. There's also a curriculum that has to be updated and some curriculum that we have to get rid of that doesn't make sense and has not been working to improve student achievement. And we need to make sure we have the professional development available to help our teachers because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of effort. There's a lot put on teachers when they have to basically get a new curriculum, learn a new curriculum. So we need to make sure that there's money there for that to support the professional development. So there's $2 million in the new curriculum that some of it is coming up that has to be renewed, and other curriculum is new. And then obviously, there's, we also want to make sure we're providing social and emotional resources for, you know, for our teachers that we're dealing with, again, with the social, emotional needs of students, especially from COVID. And we want to make sure we have materials, curriculum for that, but also training. I don't know if you have any questions. I think June's with us as well on Zoom. If you have any questions about the curriculum piece.
Well, I know I don't because we've got, I think, we have a curriculum subcommittee next week, and we're going to expand on that more.
Go through this chapter and verse. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think I'll, I know I'll keep my questions for them, but if anybody else has any immediate questions?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I definitely want to know what improvements, you know, what areas that the curriculum is covering.
Yep.
So, but I think it makes more sense to cover it in a curriculum subcommittee when we discuss the other issues.
That is why I booked it. All right. Great.
And then, so these are system-wide. Every year, and this has happened for years, this has been cut. We cut back to, I think, I don't know, $5 per kid, each school, per student. And again, this was about saving people. And then we've heard, you've all heard, teachers taking money out of their own pocket to buy things for their their students, materials, supplies. I want to get rid of teachers having to do that and go back to where we were in the the years when ed reform first came in. We're actually supplying the schools and the teachers what they need so they're not taking money out of their own pocket to to buy these materials. So we want to put $250,000 back in the budget to support all the things that teachers need to have, you know, students prepared, the things that teachers need to make their classrooms warm and welcoming. And it's just important, I think, that we support the teachers in this area because it's been several years that they have spent their own money, because this has been cut year after year after year, obviously to save people. So we're looking to put that money back in. Aldo, that comes out to how much per student? We'd go back to?
Probably about an additional $30 per student.
It's about an additional $30 per student.
I've already come from the $5 to $10 to about 25. So this is, this is, right, 67 or something.
All right. And then we have, we can talk about this, and again, we're going to survey the unions on this. We used to have an employees assistance program, and I think it's important to talk about maybe bringing that back, especially after now with COVID. I think they have it on the city side. Unfortunately, when we had it a few years ago and we had to cut it, it wasn't utilized very often. So it was cut. And so we want to do a survey with our unions to see if it's something that would be utilized. But again, this is something that could stay in, but it's also something that could come out.
Okay.
And then late buses for all our after-school programs that we put above, about $125,000 to make sure that we're getting students home at the, at the end of those programs.
That, obviously. That obviously makes sense. If we're going to have after school programs, I suppose we ought to have a way for them to get home. Okay. And, yeah, I mean, the materials for teachers, I know we've all heard about that. And I mean, that just makes sense. I mean, Mr. Minicello and I both own businesses. I, I assume that you would agree with me that, you know, we're certainly not telling our employees when they need supplies, well, head over to Staples, you got money in your pocket, I don't know what to tell you. You know, I, we would never do that. I don't know, you know, so we obviously shouldn't be doing that here either, telling our employees they have to get their own supplies. So I'm glad that we're going to be able to put an end to that, because that makes zero sense, you know, anywhere. So that, that's great. And any questions, comments? Ms. Asak?
It's more of a comment. So I just, you know, I'm sitting here, like a few, few other pool committee members. This is surreal to be able to, you know, the one thing we did a few years ago, when we, when we really had to start cutting, whether it was positions, programs, we said to them, as soon as we have the money, we will do our best to bring everything back. And I think that's what we're doing now. So, and I just remember, there were times that we talked to, we're like, what, what can you do without work with us? And a lot of our principals said, we will make it work. And they did. They made it work. And this is more of a thank you to our BPS families, and especially our superintendent. You've been doing the job of two to make it work and save us money. And we know it hasn't been easy. So a lot of people are probably thinking, oh, they're bringing back all these positions. Thank you to the BPS family, you know, our, our teachers, our staff, everyone. They made it work. Now it's time to be able to help them do their jobs better, as far as giving them the resources they need to be able to, you know, we were cutting things. So I know it wasn't an easy, easy time for them. So again, I'm just sitting here, and I'm looking at this thinking, it's awesome. That's, that's all I can say is like, we're able to do this. I mean, the middle school sports, that was one of the toughest decisions we had to make. I think that was our first year on the committee, you know, and then the music. So we're able to bring back the quality of education that we need to for, for our students, our families, you know, and our BPS family. So I just wanted to say thank you that, you know, we're making it, you know, we got to this point. So now it's time to help them, give them the resources they need. So, but thank you again. And thank you to our superintendent again. Job of two, like many others, have stepped up and taken on, you know, our amazing administrators.
Yeah, actually, we don't have, we actually left unfilled second executive, what do you, what do you call it?
Confidential. Even I know what she's called. She doesn't even work for me.
And again, I'm not.
Executive assistant. I mean.
It's been a long time that the superintendent's always had to. And we've, Melinda and I have
Managed to.
Managed to do it. Again, it's about saving people.
Right. And I don't know how you and Melinda and others have all done it, because I know that, as we've said in, in past meetings, there are lots of people in your office and at Central wearing multiple hats. There are people in school buildings wearing multiple hats, being divided by multiple schools. I mean, you know, everybody really pulled together at all levels to try to, to make things work as best we could. And, and it is good that, to Ms. Asak's point, we're finally in a position to.
And everybody, you said everybody. Teachers had had big class sizes, they've done extra jobs, they've been outside, buying their own materials. And then principals and assistants and associates have, again, done extra jobs. Again, the associates are doing content leads, and executive directors have all taken on, you know, they've all been piled on with extra work. And it's just, you know, Dr. Cobb's does Edison Academy in operations, and Sharon has done all the diversity work. June has done a lot of that work with her. It's just, and then filling in teaching and learning gaps that, you know, for positions that have been cut, that has happened in the Office of Teaching and Learning and the people that work there. And, you know, and again, it's been a lot of sacrifice. And our unions have made sacrifices, and it's been a long time coming that we are able to bring things back and make, you know, but at the end of the day, I'll go back with Mr. Minicello says, you know, two, three years from now, the results need to be there. Student achievement needs to be, we need to see the increase in improvement in the performance of our students. That's what this has to be focused on. Because if we don't see the improvement from where we are now, then none of this is going to matter. And I won't be here. And, and it's just, you know, it will be just fluff if it doesn't improve the opportunities for our student and their achievement. That's.
Well, it's a good point.
It's the most important thing. And that's the reason why we need to build back. It's all about the achievement. And if we don't see the results, there'll be consequences, that's for sure.
Right. Well, and I think we're being strategic and smart about how we build back. But the point is, you're, you're absolutely right that, you know, three years from now, the results have to be there to show that we made the right decisions, and that the students are benefiting directly from, you know, these decisions and these things that were the positions and everything that we're bringing back. You know, because we obviously have seen the damage by the cuts we've had to make. And, and now, obviously, and I think we, I think we are being very strategic about where the money is going. And we may have to make shifts as we go along, too, if we, you know, we're going to have to be flexible and see, all right, this is working really well. This didn't work as well as we had hoped. And we'll make those shifts as, as we go, and as we need to, and as we see the, the need of our student body warrants, you know, making, making additional changes. Anybody else?
Mike, Tom, Adam.
Tom?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to implement changes that are going to provide academic excellence, bottom line. You know, I'll tell you one thing that I'm irate about, and that's the elimination of penmanship in the Brockton Public Schools, as well as up at public schools. It basically is showing that the public schools are like second class students, because you have all kids graduating from private schools who all learn penmanship, who all can write, sign their name. It's going to be embarrassing for these students someday when they have to sign a document or a paper, and they, and you ask a kid, what's cursive? And the kid doesn't even know what the hell cursive is. That's embarrassing. You know, so I don't know how that has ever gotten this far, that we don't even teach penmanship. And a kid can't even sign their name, or has to print their name. So these are the things in curriculum we have to talk about. We have to make some smart decisions. Some real changes that need to be made. And I'm not saying just Brockton, but public school in general. Because this, this crisis has really separated the two, in terms of what kids have been provided with a curriculum that has had minimum hiccups, and some kids that have been provided with a curriculum that has had major hiccups. And, and these two years are really going to, I think, in the future, show in higher education, the difference between certain students. So these are the things we have to talk about in curriculum, because we have to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our kids' future. You know, so, you know, so these are serious decisions. So I mean, I'm all in full favor. We all know that we want kids involved with programs and important programs for certain ages, to keep them involved in, in quality programs, as opposed to getting into mischief after school. But at the same time, we have to produce the results, academic excellence, to show that we use the money effectively. Otherwise, the money will never come back again, if we waste it, you know?
Right. No, you're absolutely right. And I think something I'd like to add, you know, when we, when we have curriculum next week, we can have further discussion, not just about the allocation and the use of this 2 million in curriculum, but also any other curriculum changes, you know, I mean, we can discuss in that meeting too. Because to your point about penmanship, and I see it in my own practice, the younger generation that's starting to come out, and, and, you know, you get signed here, and it looks like it's, it's printed, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing it as well. But also, you know, maybe something we can look at. And again, I don't know how it will coincide with where we are in time with DSE and the district review. But, you know, there's just this basic level of financial literacy that people don't have, you know, and I don't know if that's something that we can look at as well, to have our kids go out into the world with some basic level of financial literacy. We have some programs, the Empower Program, which is a wonderful program, but, but something that everybody, you know, takes. Again, you know, I think, I think it's worth discussing. But again, that'll be a separate meeting. I don't want to keep beating that drum here. Did anybody else want to opine on this any further? All right. So then I'll wrap up the comments with just one final thought or thing. You know, we've gone through all this. Some of it's local funds, some of it's state funds, some of it's federal funds. And that's what I wanted to say. I wanted to thank our state and federal delegations, because they've really delivered for Brockton, you know. We've got millions and millions of dollars coming in between all these different funding sources. And our, our state and federal delegations have really delivered. And I just wanted to say that again. I know we've said it before, but, you know, it's, it's important to, to say it again, that they've delivered, again, this asset money, these federal dollars that are pouring in when in prior years they've been cut. You know, so I, I think we got to give our, our state and federal delegation credit for the advocacy and the work they've done to be able to deliver the support we needed. So. Mike, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Any other business from members of the committee under finance? All right. Seeing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Minicello, properly seconded by Ms. Sullivan. What is that? I'll call the roll.
I think it's the camera.
Maybe.
I think it's the, I think it's the camera.
Oh, is it this when it's moving?
I think it's moving when the camera goes to someone, like when it goes to Judy, or if it goes over. I think, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, I think that, I think that's what it is. We'll see.
Do you spray that on electronics? I don't.
Everything, yeah. And so does Windex, right?
Right. Windex and WD-40. Circuits loves liquids.
Don't touch the.
Yeah, duct tape's great, too. Yeah, sure.
On that note, I'm going to call the roll. What better way to end than on a good laugh?
That's right.
All right. So D'Agostino, yes. Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.